Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to tonight's business meeting of the Colonial School District Board of Directors. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to announce that the board met an executive session on January 10th for approximately one hour. Discussion topics included CESP negotiation updates, Teamsters negotiation ratification update, and the CEA healthcare waiver. The board also met tonight prior to this meeting to discuss student discipline, CESP negotiations, solicitor correspondence, and the board retreat. That meeting also lasted about one hour. I'd like to make, can we do the motions without Sharon being sworn in?
Yes, she just can't vote on the approval of the minutes, but she'll be able to vote on all the new business.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as presented in 4B through 4G. If there is a second to that motion. Beth, any questions or comments on any of the minutes in board docs? All in favor? Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the financial reports as presented in items 5B through 5M for November 21st, November 2021 and December 2021, which include all of the below listed items. And those two can be found in board docs. Is there any, may I have a second, please? Kathy, thank you. Any questions on these items? All in favor? I'd like to make a motion to approve the November 2021 and December 2021 treasures report. May I have a second? Beth, any questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, superintendent's update.
Thank you, Mrs. Moore. Very grateful that the storm missed us this morning and we were able to have a regular school day rather than a virtual day. And I do know several of the students, particularly those at CES, our 405 building, since my office is in this building, have reminded me that I still can use snow days and not virtual days. So certainly appreciate the feedback the kids have given me during lunch. I do want to talk about item L and new business, which is our health and safety plan. We continue, and our goal continues to be, to keep schools open despite the challenges of COVID-19 and the latest variant. We know that it's, it is widespread in not only our community, but throughout the area. I want to take some time to thank our faculty, our staff, our nurses in particular, and our principals, our building principals have done an outstanding job. And their unwavering efforts have helped keep students in school. They've communicated with families, and these are not easy communications, not only to receive, but not easy to give, as we've had to share instances of positive cases and students have had to either, students and staff have had to isolate and quarantine as we continue to navigate through the varying guidance that we receive from local health agencies. We want to continue to provide in-person education while offering multiple safety measures. Some of these safety measures include multiple vaccine clinics, including one just last night where nearly 300 of our middle school students received their booster shots. Mental health supports through our care team and our student assistance program for students who are struggling during the pandemic. We continue to spread students out during lunch, and that's one of our biggest challenges because that is time when students are unmasked and they need that break, and they want to see their friends and they want to see their friends' faces. And there are many districts that can't spread students out, simply don't have the real estate. And while we have challenges with doing it, we've come up with some very creative ideas. For example, this room we're all sitting in right now acts as a second cafeteria lunchroom for our students here at CES. We've purchased a massive tent in the high school to put in the courtyard with heaters so that we can spread students out. They need that time with their friends. We've also provided testing for staff, assurance testing, and we've implemented test-to-stay for our students, particularly helping those students who, in the fall, who were quarantined as a result of being close contacts on buses despite being masked. We've been able to keep kids in school for longer periods of time. If they do test positive, they need to obviously quarantine, but we've been able to keep kids in class and in-person learning. And lastly, as part of these safety measures, we have required masking, and that was approved by the board on August 9th. We understand, and I understand, the board understands, that there's COVID fatigue out there on many levels, whatever, however it's impacted your personal lives, your family, or your child's education. We're all tired of it. We want it to be over, but the reality is transmission rates are in the high level, and there's no, there's no getting around that. On tonight's agenda, I am recommending a revision to the health and safety plan. The motion provides that masking will still be required while we are in high, which is what we're in right now, or substantial transmission, but it will move to a recommended option if we are in low or moderate transmission. And we are a ways from that, undoubtedly. But I'm hopeful coming this, this coming spring that we can reach that and we have the opportunity for students and staff to have the option to wear a mask or not. We get this data from the COVID, Montgomery County COVID hub. It's publicly accessible data on the site, and they try to update it a couple times a week, but this particular data was most recently updated on January 13th. I want there to be, the recommendation includes two consecutive weeks in low or moderate, and then masks will become optional. If we do return to high or substantial transmission for one week, we will return to masking. There are some folks that don't believe in the premise that masking is effective, and I respect those opinions, and I've talked with some of those families. It's part of the layered approach that we've, that we've applied and as we still learn about this virus. And while it's two years old and we're all tired of it, and in terms of how old it is, it's still, we're still learning, and scientists are still learning. So that is the motion, and I would like our, I mean, we certainly look forward to the spring when we hopefully can remove them. But I would like our solicitor, Mr. Sultanic, just to offer a brief opinion on the board's authority to require masking because we have received a few questions on that. Jeff, if you would do so?
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Christian. Very briefly, we have received, as you've indicated, a number of questions from community members about the school district's authority to impose masking. First of all, I do sit on a school solicitors association committee which regularly discusses this issue, and the consensus of school solicitors throughout the state is that Section 5-510 of the Public School Code grants authority to school districts, as emanating from the 1949 Public School Code, to give school district the authority to enact reasonable regulations to govern the operations of the school district. And it is with that authority that the school district annually adopts its disciplinary code, its codes that require students to engage in certain clothing and the wearing of protective equipment and chemistry labs, in athletics, to wear prophylactic equipment, in wood shop to the extent that we have that, or in any ultra hazardous situations, and the like. And to the best of my knowledge, there has not been any case in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania that has mitigated the authority of a school district to enact masking controls, which in my opinion are very similar to any other kind of protective equipment for the safety of students. And indeed, the opposite has occurred, where there have been about six court challenges involving school districts masking policies and masking authority, and none of the decisions have limited school authority in engaging in masking. I know a few people have argued that the Pennsylvania Supreme Court decision that limited the Acting Secretary of Health Beam's authority to enact masking is precedent for the fact that a subordinate entity like a school district could not do it. But the Secretary of Health's authority was based upon a totally different law, and the Supreme Court ruled that the Secretary of Health did not follow the regulatory procedure in the law to adopt the statewide masking order, which is completely different than the question being posed here. And finally, on January 17th of this week, a judge in the Western District of Pennsylvania considered a case brought by a group of special education and fragile student parents arguing that the decision of the North Allegheny School District to move to a masking optional policy in the midst of the current COVID-19 Omicron surge posed an unreasonable danger to the students involved, and the judge agreed with those parents temporarily and issued a temporary restraining order in question. So we are very well aware of the very polarized views in our community and in our Commonwealth regarding the implementation of masking, but I'm here to tell you that I believe strongly that Section 5-510 would survive any kind of challenge in terms of the authority of the school district to implement a masking requirement, as we have been for some time now. So that concludes my remarks unless there's any questions on the part of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Sultanic.
That concludes my update.
Yeah, okay. At this time, Dr. Christian's going to swear our new board member in.
I, Sharon Marino, do solemnly swear.
I, Sharon Marino, do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office as a school director in the Colonial School District with fidelity.
And I will discharge my duties in the Colonial School District with fidelity.
Okay, very good. Congratulations.
Okay, now is the time for any public comment on items on tonight's agenda. If anyone from the pub, from the audience would like to speak, come up to the podium, State your name and where you live.
Hey, my name is Tim O'Brien from Plymouth Meeting. I have three kids in the school district. And your test-to-stay policy that is for, I guess, it's required for unvaccinated students to get a test to stay in school if they've been exposed to someone with COVID, is that correct?
No, it was changed originally, it was that.
What, what has it been changed to?
Well, why don't you finish your comments and then I'll respond.
Okay, so I was unaware that it changed, but I was under the impression that it was required for students that are unvaccinated to be tested to stay in school, but kids that are vaccinated that are also exposed to COVID can get and spread COVID or are not required to test to stay in school. Is that correct?
So that originally, we spoke on the phone, originally, that was the program that was offered by CHOP and the Montgomery County Office of Public Health. We communicated over the winter break that it was expanding, and I think I mentioned to you on the phone, we were working towards that, and we expanded it to include vaccinated and unvaccinated, because I agree that if I'm the parent of a child, whether they're vaccinated or not, to get that assurance test is valuable.
So are vaccinated students required to test to stay in school?
It's offered.
It's offered, but is it required? Is it required, like it is for the unvaccinated students?
It's not a requirement, it's offered.
It's offered.
I'm not going to argue with Mr. O'Brien, you can finish, you can finish your comments. This isn't a give and take. Just finish your comments.
Please just verify, verify what you're saying. You're saying that it's offered, but for students that are unvaccinated to stay in school, they have to test to stay and be negative. But kids that are vaccinated don't have to test to stay in school. It's offered to them, but it's not required.
Correct.
Is that correct? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anyone else in the audience want to speak?
Dr. Christian, and that, it's so complicated. I'm sorry, Dr. Christian.
I don't know what his point is.
Well, I just want to ask, so that is, that's based on all the Montgomery County and the, I mean, I know there's a very big chart that follows that.
It's a program we're participating in.
That's what we're doing based on, right, okay, thank you.
Okay, I am Lori Lafferty from Plymouth Meeting. I have three children in the district. I actually sent an email to the board members today, I don't know if anybody got a chance to read it, with a lot of articles concerning the mental health of our children. So while your proposal to change the masking policy is a step in the right direction, it is not good enough. The Surgeon General has declared a youth mental health crisis, saying the COVID-19 pandemic has further altered their experiences at home, school, and the community, and the effect on their mental health has been devastating. So that's a direct quote, devastating effect on mental health. And a CNN article just recently has said that while COVID-19 has largely been sparing of children's physical health, so again, a direct quote, admitting that it is not, it's sparing of their health. Studies have shown that it has taken a toll on their mental health associated with increase in suicide-related behaviors. This is serious stuff we're talking about. COVID-19, children are not at risk. They are at risk of mental health disorders, eating disorders, suicide. And masking is the biggest and most damaging change to children's lives since school has reopened. It isolates them, makes it easier for them to hide, hinders communication, prevents them from expressing and reading emotions, and has a direct impact on their mental health. And I know, Dr. Christian, you say, I understand that it's COVID fatigue, but I don't think you understand, because you're not an eight-year-old, nine-year-old, 10-year-old, five or any age of a child sitting in a classroom. They're not even sitting as close as you are. Okay, I mean, when they go to eat lunch, like you said, they're sitting in a room that's far apart. You can all go to lunch and sit in a restaurant with your friends. My children have been told to separate from their friends at lunch. So I don't think, unless you have spoken to a child, especially in elementary school, that you know what they're going through. No field trips, no concerts, no class parties, they can't play with their friends at lunch. So these aren't just fun things, these are like indispensable. This is how children grow socially, emotionally. Okay, so all of this, the masking, the isolation, is taking a huge impact. So why are you enforcing masks, which have been proven to be ineffective? Cloth masks are not effective, but we continue to enforce them to fight a virus that has a greater than 99.99% survival rate for children. Meanwhile, suicide rates, eating disorders have skyrocketed since the pandemic. And again, this is all referenced in the articles that I emailed you all earlier today. I can't think of one good reason to continue to enforce masks. The only thing I can come up with is money. You're getting money from the county, right? It is on the MOCO website that to enroll in the test-to-state program, you had to require masks. So is there another reason, other than the county said you have to do it, that we are continuing to require masks?
So as I said, we feel that masking is part of a layered approach to student safety. There's no money tied to it.
You don't, but do you believe that the risks outweigh the benefits of masking? First of all, there are no benefits of masking. That has been proven.
I appreciate, I appreciate your opinion, and thank you for your comments.
But that's not my opinion. That has been proven that cloth masks are ineffective. And, okay, so my bottom line is that we keep being told to follow the science, and I think at some point the school board has to follow the science. Masks are ineffective, children are suffering, mental health is suffering. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else from the audience wish to speak?
Tracy Wattenmaker, White Marsh Township. I know the attorney, or the solicitor for the school was just on, you know, I think what he had to say was just a lot of his belief regarding certain code of conduct within whatever the laws are. I'm speaking on behalf of Rebecca Damsker and Michael P. Gigliotti Esquire. They're unable to attend tonight. I'm in full support of this, which I'm going to read on their behalf, since we all, you know, we're not, it was not mentioned out loud that this was sent to the board and to the solicitor. So this was sent to Jeffrey Sultanic with a copy to the board and to Dr. Christian on January 15th of 2022. Dear sir or madam, as parents and taxpayers in Colonial School District, we are concerned by the district's plan to continue to require students to wear masks as a condition of access to the public school system. As a creature of statute, the school district only has the powers granted to it through statutory law. There is no legal authority within the public school code or elsewhere that allows the school district to require students to wear masks. Considering that Pennsylvania's highest court found that the Secretary of Health did not have the power to require masks in school under the disease prevention and control law, is unlikely that schools, under general powers to implement rules and regulation, possess more power regarding disease prevention than the Secretary of Health. Under December 7th, 2021, U.S. Surgeon General Dr. Vivek Murthy issued a new Surgeon General's advisory, which Lori had pointed to earlier, so I will skip over that point. Eight school districts in neighboring Bucks County have begun the return to pre-pandemic conditions. Central Bucks' most recent health and safety plan should serve as a model for Colonial School District. Superintendent Luckabel's plan implements the decision of the Supreme Court, as well as acknowledging that a mask is a modified quarantine. Only a health director can write an official order to place a person in a quarantine for a determined period of time. It is time to return to normal. Students have suffered enough during this pandemic. It is time to allow all students the ability to breathe unrestricted again as a choice. We are under enough stress as busy parents and desire, and desire to avoid the time and cost of litigation against the district on this issue. We hope that the school board will reconsider its decision with respect to requiring masks or in-person education. If not, we are prepared to fully exercise our legal rights. Sincerely, Rebecca Damsker, Michael P. Gigliotti Esquire. I'm in full support of this as well. You know, I think, Dr. Christian, you pointed to in the January 10th meeting that there was, I think you said it was Souderton that was implementing mask choice, and that most students still wore their masks. That might be the case if you ever let go of the requirement here as well. And, you know, again, to point out, even those that are vaccinated, whether you're vaccinated or not, I think we all know that three shots, the virus is still getting through. So I think to continue to talk about vaccines and this and that is a little bit moot at this point. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else from the audience?
Hi, Amanda Corcas, Plymouth Township. I just want to say what that gentleman that was on the screen said, whatever school code it is that you're, you know, saying you have the authority to do this, he said within reasonable, and to me, this is not something in woodshop, this is a medical device, not clothing, so to me, this is not reasonable at all. So this definitely needs to be a decision that is made by the parent. I'm way more concerned about the damage being done to my child's physical and mental health from wearing a mask six-plus hours a day, five days a week than I am about her getting COVID. I'm sure you've all heard all of these facts before, so, you know, I probably don't even have to say them, but it decreases oxygen levels, elevates CO2 levels in the body, which is very hard on the heart and kidneys. It is increased in our children when they are running at recess or playing, or, you know, playing a sport or a game in gym, as their muscles build up lactic acid, which gets, goes into their lungs and is converted into CO2. When they are unable to get rid of this biological waste by exhaling and breathing in oxygen because they're wearing a mask, it causes their bodies to become extremely acidic. Wearing a mask changes the pH levels of the mouth, which can lead to dental caries, periodontal disease. Prolonged masking is causing mastoarmatitis, acne, staph, and strep infections of the skin, face, and mouth, and throat. Wearing a mask increases the chances of getting respiratory infection, not to mention all the germs that these are covered with, because we know they're taking them off, throwing them on the lunch tables, taking them off in the bathrooms, touching them constantly with dirty hands, and then putting it back on their face. So, you know, really not doing anything. The bottom line is it needs to be a decision made by the parent. This is not the decision a school board needs to be making for our kids. This is my child, and, you know, it's not your decision. These are not your children. Kids are not at risk here, so why are we continuing to force masks on our children? And, you know, all the kids, I've been getting emails every day, all the emails, there's been a lot of kids getting COVID. They are going to get it, and what's happening to these kids? They're going home, and they're getting better, and they're coming back to school. So why are we continuing to keep masking? Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak?
Hi, good evening. My name is Monica Salvia, and I'm a member of the community here I live in, Plymouth Meeting. I was not planning to come up to speak tonight, but I just felt like I wanted to get up and say that as a parent, I am really grateful to the district for putting the safety of our kids first. I strongly believe that the science says that wearing masks is a proven part of the effective reduction in COVID, so in terms of improvement, isolation, distancing, the cleaning that you're doing, masks are part of that. And so I am grateful for you doing that. The numbers are high, we're nervous, we want to keep our kids safe, and keeping them in school with masks, I believe, is a safe way to do that. Thank you, appreciate it.
Anybody else from the audience? Mr. Bogl, oh, I'm sorry.
One more.
Okay.
Hi, Nina Sabans from Plymouth Meeting. I have two kids in the district, little ones, and I also want to echo Monica's comments. I want to thank the school board for the masking requirement. Now, the reality is, my kids, they are fully vaccinated, and the first thing they asked me was, can we stop wearing masks? And I mistakenly had said, yeah, sure. But with the rise of the Omicron surge, and the reality is, yes, if you are vaccinated, you can still, you can still catch COVID, you can still transmit COVID. And the other reality is there are still many, many individuals that have remained unvaccinated in the county. And the healthcare system is overwhelmed. That's also a reality. And so as I explain it to them this way, I don't like wearing my mask either, and they don't like wearing it, but they understand that it is civic duty to the community, they will continue wearing masks, they do not complain about it, to keep themselves, their peers, their teachers, and everyone else in the community safe. And also, it keeps them out of my house during work hours, right? Because it keeps the school open, and this is, that's for real, like, that's the most important thing right now. So, thank you, and I appreciate what you've done.
Hi, my name's Kate Clark. I live in White Marsh Township. I have two children in the district and a third that will be coming in a couple of years. I did not have any intention of speaking tonight, kind of forgot that masking was on the agenda. I am a teacher in a local school district. They did decide, I think in December, that masking would be optional soon, depending on the transmission rate. As an educator, I at least felt safer knowing that it was dependent on that number, because that felt as though we were still looking at the science. I do know that educators are burnout from personal experience, and people are leaving my district in droves. I believe I got a text message from a friend, 29 resignations and/or early retirements or retirements, just this year alone. I want the teachers in this district and the staff members to feel supported, and I want them to feel happy, because when the educators and the staff are happy, supportive, they're going to work and do really well. they're gonna work and do really well in the classroom with my children. That being said, I'm curious if you've thought about their safety, as they don't have, you know, the same 99.9, whatever the percent is, in terms of outcome rate. They might have family. For example, myself, I have a father who's very ill, so if I brought COVID to him, it would not be good. In fact, on an aside, my son did get diagnosed with COVID October 30th of this year. He was asymptomatic. We only tested because we had friends coming for dinner, and if he had gone maskless around my dad when he visited that day, he potentially could have passed it to my father. He thankfully did not. So I disagree firmly with the thought that masks do not work. They do. I agree wholeheartedly that it's terrible to wear a mask all day. I don't like teaching in a mask, and I don't like having to tell students to pull their mask up or any of that. I do know that children being in school is mentally better for them. I've enjoyed this year so much better than last year. So thank you for your time. Thank you for your hard commitment as school board members, and that's all.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Dr. Christian emails, or is there anyone?
We had one email, a public comment from Lee Bink of White Marsh Township. He is requesting that the school district consider masks optional, similar to Central Bucks School District. And as a parent of a K-3 school-aged child, he would like to discuss how we can live with this endemic and start to help our children get back to normalized school days. That was from Lee and Bridgette Bink of White Marsh Township.
Is that it? Is that everybody?
We have two hands raised at this time.
Okay.
Please state your full name and place of residence.
Hi, my name is Josh Kaplan. I live in White Marsh Township. I have a daughter in fourth grade at Colonial Elementary. I also have a son in private school. So I know that you all mean well and care about our kids, but the uncomfortable reality is that your health and safety plan does not address the needs of the whole child. Our kids are not okay. For nearly two years, we've been so hyper-focused on COVID, we've largely ignored the overall well-being of our kids. We've deprived our kids of so much of their childhood that they can never get back, while at the same time subjecting them to burdens that children should never have to bear. Forcing children to mask against their will has caused tremendous damage for no measurable benefit. At this stage in the pandemic, mask mandates are not supported by the data, and we know from lived experience that mask mandates are not necessary for schools to operate safely. Dr. Christian, I take issue with your earlier comment that parents who believe a mask mandate is harmful do not believe in the premise of masking. Back in the spring of 2020, I very much believed in the premise of masking. I thought it was common sense. But as I started digging into the data, I changed my view, because the data indicates that masking is not effective at stopping the transmission of respiratory viruses. But it's not my responsibility to prove that mask mandates are not necessary. Dr. Christian, you are asking the board to restrict my fundamental right as a parent to determine what is in the best interest of my child and to force a harmful intervention on my daughter with no discussion of any evidence to support your recommendation or why this proposal is necessary. If you and the board want to use your power to restrict the fundamental rights of my family, the burden of proof is on you to present compelling evidence that the benefits of masking my child outweigh the harms. You have not met that burden. My wife is gonna be making some comments soon that I firmly agree with, but I'd also like to focus on some of the more insidious harms of forcing children to cover their faces. Forced masking is dehumanizing. Forced masking strips kids of their personal autonomy and denies them basic human rights, the right to breathe freely, to show their faces, to share smiles with a friend. My sixth grader constantly says to me, Dad, do you know what it's like to go to school every day and not see your friends' faces? I obviously do not, and I can't imagine what that must be like. Masks are a constant reminder that children have no agency and are helpless to improve their situation, no matter how much they're suffering. What kind of message does it send to our children for adults to consent to restrictions on kids that adults are not willing to live by themselves? If all adults were forced to mask like kids, masking would have ended long ago. Forced masking conditions kids of all ages to blindly follow the authority of adults, no matter how arbitrary the rules. How do you tell a kid with a straight face that they must mask in school for their safety, when they can go unmasked practically everywhere else outside of school? It's like trying to explain why it's safe to eat at a restaurant without a mask while you're sitting, but unsafe to walk to the table mask-free. There's no rational explanation. It's impossible to rationalize all of the different mask policies, because these policies were based on politics, not science. Masks condition children to live in fear. Masks have become a security blanket for many children and adults alike, to the point that they believe they are in danger without their mask, and that unmasked people are a danger to them. I understand that your hands were tied for the first half of the school year because of the governor's illegal mask mandate and the county's draconian quarantine policies, but these obstacles have been removed. We now have tests to stay. We have vaccines available for all students and staff members who want one. We have a large percentage of our student body with natural immunity. We can pretend that the same masks that failed against Delta will succeed in stopping the far more transmissible Omicron variant, but even Dr. Fauci and the CDC have acknowledged that all of us will be infected with or exposed to Omicron if we haven't already. I realize that during times of heightened fear, the natural tendency is to double down on restrictions, but it doesn't have to be that way. Schools in much of the country have operated mask optional for the entire school year with great success. Most of Europe never masked elementary school kids at any point during the pandemic. I have colleagues around the country whose kids have lived completely normal lives this entire school year. Whether we like it or not, COVID is not going anywhere. We need to move forward, but the proposal tonight is a giant step backwards. With all due respect, it makes absolutely no sense at this point in time to tie masking to a completely arbitrary metric that was created out of thin air in April 2020 and that has little bearing on the safety of our schools. I implore the board to reject the proposal before you and to vote to give power back to parents to determine what is in the best interests of our families. Assuming you are not going to vote to go mask optional tonight, I respectfully request that you defer a decision on this matter until the board meeting next month. I am very concerned that if we adopt Dr. Christian's plan tonight, we might never reach moderate community transmission levels again, given the nature of this virus, which would mean that our kids would have to mask forever. Clearly, that cannot happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Kaplan.
Please state your full name and place of residence.
Hi, my name is Jamie Kaplan. I live in White Marsh Township. Every day as a parent, there are risks to our children that we need to evaluate and consider. I'm worried about my children getting in a car accident, or in an accident while riding a bus to school, or getting a serious illness, or choking when I'm not there to help them. I'm worried that if I let them ride their bike down the street, something bad could happen, and I won't be there to help them. But despite these risks, for the 12 years I've been a parent, I still send my kids to school, or I leave them with a childcare provider so I can go to work, and I hope for the best. I took all of these risks because being an adult means conducting a constant risk-benefit analysis. Yes, I let my daughter get in a car with someone other than me, but it was so I could go to work and earn an income and give her a better life. Yes, it was annoying to have her sick all of the time as a toddler in preschool with colds after ear infection after cough, but the benefit of her being socialized and learning from an early age made it worth the constant barrage of illnesses. Yes, I was worried about her going under anesthesia to have ear tubes, but the benefit of her having better hearing was worth the risks of anesthesia. And I know that in the grand scheme of things, perhaps the things I worry about are not as hard or serious as the things other people worry about. I'm not here to say that my experience is harder. I'm here to say that COVID is another risk that we have to face in this world as parents. Unfortunately, it's not going away. But fortunately, we have learned that children are at an extremely low risk for serious illness from this disease. We are now two years in, and no one has suffered more than children during this pandemic. And the sad thing is, we won't know how much they've suffered for years to come, but what I am seeing is a systemic stripping of children's identities and individual freedoms, and a total disregard for mental health, social, emotional growth, and communication skills. Gone are the opportunities to see your friend's face when they laugh, or see a peer's face if you say something that upsets them, so that you can figure out how to respond. Gone are the days of seeing a teacher smile at a student. Children literally are forbidden from using facial expressions in school as a form of communication. These rules have consequences, the extent of which we will not know for years to come, but we do know that social and emotional intelligence are extremely important skills as adults. We also know there is an actual mental health crisis in young people that many people have already mentioned tonight. For some parents, COVID may be another worry to add to a long list of things parents worry about every day. But for me as a parent, my biggest worry on a daily basis is the long-term social and emotional damage being done to my children due to the overly restrictive masking rules at school, and how they have been forced to accept this way of life and say things like, "We are lucky to take our masks off outside." These statements are heartbreaking, soul-crushing signs of an unspeakable loss of childhood and freedom. And I worry that when they grow older, if other freedoms are taken away, they won't even notice, because they were told to accept whatever hand they are dealt, and not to think critically, or ask hard questions about the purpose or effectiveness of rules, and told not to speak up for what they believe in or fight for what they think is just. I don't want to be here speaking, subject to the judgment of neighbors and acquaintances, but I'm doing it because as a child, I was taught to speak up for what I believe in and not to let my voice or identity be silenced. So here I am, and I want my kids to know I fought for the childhood that I wanted to give them. COVID is here. There's a vaccine. Anyone that wants it can get it. If people want their kids to wear masks, by all means, they can wear masks forever if they would like. If teachers want to wear a mask, that is fine too. But if people don't want their children that has no symptoms of COVID, or who already had COVID, to wear a mask because they have determined that any benefit of a mask is severely outweighed by the harm it is doing to their child's social, emotional, and mental well-being, families should have the choice. Until March 2020, parents always had a choice on how to manage risk before they could send their child out of the home. This fundamental freedom was taken away from us due to an unprecedented pandemic, and we were patient for two years. But now we know better. We have a vaccine. We have thousands of school districts around the country and around the world, and now several in Pennsylvania, that have already returned the freedom to manage risk back to parents. And so I ask you, implore you, beg of you, plead with you, please stop denying me my right as a parent to make my own risk assessments for my children. Please stop denying my child her right to breathe freely, show her smile, and to socially and emotionally grow in a developmentally appropriate way. Thank you.
Please state your full name, place of residence.
Hi, my name is Nick. My name is Nick Jacques. I'm a Plymouth Township resident. To preface this, I am an educator, if this is of any importance, and I would have no problem if my students were allowed to unmask. So my comment is this: Back on December 14th, I sent an email to Dr. Christian and to each member of the school board, respectfully demanding that a survey be sent out immediately to colonial families, asking if we would like the choice to mask our children from here on out, or if we want to continue with the district's mandate that our children be masked in school. I never received a response, and your silence speaks volumes. Why have colonial families, the taxpayers you work for, not been polled on this issue? Thank you.
Please state your full name, place of residence. Please state your full name, place of residence.
All right, at this time, I'd like to ask this, I'm sorry, we have one more from the audience.
Hi, everybody.
Please state your full name and place of residence, please.
My name is Danielle Bowman. My place of residence is here in Lafayette Hill. So, in August of this year, myself and a bunch of other parents came in here to the meeting for the same purposes. Express valid concerns about continued mitigation. Parents presented information and data to justify their opinions regarding masks itself and the short-term and long-term effects of forcing children to cover their faces for seven hours a day. A parent presented supported research demonstrating the effectiveness of masks, given the extremely small particle size of the virus, right? Everyone here dismissed it. Not the new board members, you weren't here yet, but everybody else dismissed it completely. Very recently, it came out that face masks are little more than facial decorations if they are cloth. In this room, there are people with cloth masks. They do nothing. The majority of our children wear cloth masks. They do nothing. That demonstrates that the fact that there is very little spread in the school has nothing to do with the mitigation in place. It's all virtue signaling. There are studies that clearly show that two schools in the same district in other states have shown, one with mask optional, one with mask mandatory, that there's no significant difference in spread. How could you wear these kind of cloth masks and think that they do anything, given that the science doesn't back it? And all of the people that you follow, the CDC, everybody else, all of your follow-the-science just said that it does nothing. This is not about following the science. Other parents came in, talked about all the long-term mental health effects. This board dismissed it. We were all cuckoo. We didn't follow the science. Oh, we didn't care about other people. We were selfish. Everything that we have said has now come out to be factual. No one here seems to care about that. I don't know if it's about liability issues. I don't know if it's about not getting funding, if you don't just do what the county says, but regardless, it is not following science. It's following people's emotions. Where is the off-ramp? When are we done with this? The guidelines right now will never be reached.
Can you please cover your mask, cover your nose?
The guidelines right now will never be reached. Here, the guidelines right now will never be reached, ever. Not even in the summer where we had those numbers. Where is the off-ramp? Where is it? Somebody please answer. Do you have common sense? Like, there's no common sense here. Blindly following the science. Where's the common sense? Do you care that 50, over 50% increase in girls going to the ER for suicidality this year? Oh, but our kids are resilient. Oh, okay. Why do our kids have to be resilient to protect the emotions of fragile adults? This is all ridiculous theater. Where is the, when do we get an answer on the off-ramp? Can anybody tell me? Because you have no clue.
There's a motion in front of the board this evening. Thank you for your comment.
I'd like to make a motion, ask the superintendent to give his report, please.
Motion to approve the personnel report and extracurricular contracts as outlined in 9B and 9C. Board action is requested for the recommended personnel changes. Appointments for promotion, employment, or transfer are subject to the presentation of valid credentials, employment verification documentation, and state mandated requirements.
And it's a motion to approve. Is there a second to that motion? Beth? Any questions or comments for Dr. Christian on his superintendent's report? All in favor? Thank you. Dr. Christian, you want to continue?
Item D, Superintendent's Report, January. Every year is School Director Recognition Month, whereas the role of locally-elected school officials has served the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and local communities in meeting the needs of public education since the passage of the Free School Act in 1834, and whereas these local boards have discharged their responsibilities to public education in a manner which has placed public education in the forefront of our educational systems, and whereas locally-elected officials have distinguished themselves and their communities in this non-paid volunteer public service commitment, and whereas the contributions of these men and women should be recognized and appreciated by those who benefit from the workings of our public school system. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of School Directors of the Pennsylvania School Boards Association hereby proclaims the month of January as School Director Recognition Month in this Commonwealth, and further resolve that this proclamation be communicated to all school districts, school officials, and local communities in a planned program which brings visibility and awareness to the role of locally-elected school officials to the citizenry of this Commonwealth. Thank you all of our school board members for your dedication, once again, in this non-paid volunteer activity. We certainly appreciate your dedication to the children of the school district.
Is the time for the student representatives' report? Oh, okay, sorry.
Also this month, the board annually adopts the principles of governance and leadership, and that includes advocating earnestly, leading responsibly, governing effectively, planning thoughtfully, evaluating continuously, communicating clearly, and acting ethically. And the board does this annually as a kickoff each calendar year. So we will need a motion and a second.
I have a motion to approve that. Kathy? Second? Beth? Beth? Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments on this, Kathy?
This is my favorite resolution and motion or anything of the year. This is when we are outwardly resolving to do all of these things. And even when members of the public say things that could be hurtful to us and call us cuckoo, we know that deep down, we are advocating earnestly and leading responsibly and governing effectively and planning thoughtfully and evaluating continuously and communicating clearly and acting ethically. So kudos to myself and all of my fellow board members and staff members for resolving to continue to do these things today and moving forward.
Thank you, Kathy. Anybody else want to say anything? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Great, thank you. And now it is time for the student representatives' reports. Okay, guys.
Good evening, Dr. Christian, school board members and community. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to provide the January monthly school student report. The report will encompass various events that have occurred since the school board meeting in November. White Marsh Elementary's Grade III Choral Concert featuring Mrs. Langus and the Lyrical Alliance will be held at CES on Wednesday, February 2nd, 2022. WES students have been practicing hard for this much-anticipated concert. White Marsh is also proud to announce that they have been participating in the Anti-Defamation League's No Place For Hate program this school year. The first official building-wide culminating activity will take place tomorrow on January 22nd, 2022.
Spearheaded by Krista Stroller, Ridge Park teacher and White Marsh Elementary parent, Ridge Park and White Marsh Elementary collected over half a ton of candy for Soldiers Angels, a national nonprofit organization whose mission is to provide aid, comfort, and resources to the military, veterans, and their families. The kindness and generosity of their students and families is unmeasurable. On December 9th, Officer Lacy from Plymouth Township Police Department led the annual Ride to School in a Police Car Event. Students and staff are appreciative of local law enforcement and their interactions with Ridge Park.
Plymouth Elementary's Spirit Team hosted a Pajama Day fundraiser on December 21st, 2021. PJ Day was a fun and easy way to create a sense of community and support the kids at the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia. Students and staff raised over $1,400.
During the week of November 15th to November 19th, Conshohocken Elementary celebrated American Education Week. Various activities were planned for this week, including School or College Sweatshirt Day, Blue and Gold Day, Pajama Day, and Future Career Day. During this week, students participated in a penny fundraiser for the NICS Cancer Foundation and raised over $700.
On December 12th and 15th, the advanced band and chorus at Colonial Elementary began before and after school rehearsals to prepare for their January 27th concert. The week of December 3rd, students involved with the morning meetings focused on celebrating international people with disabilities. Throughout the week, the students learned about different disabilities, how to recognize disabilities, and talk about the ways they can show respect, acceptance, and understanding. Colonial Middle School in December, the chorus and orchestra were happy to return live in-person performances. On December 14th, the CMS Orchestra performed in the gymnasium and the CMS Chorus performed in the auditorium to two fantastic audiences. Under the direction of Mrs. O'Connor and Ms. Fankis, both ensembles enjoyed performing after two long years of silence in the Colonial School District. Colonial Middle School presented two band concerts in January led by Band Director Mr. O'Neill. The sixth-grade concert was a huge success on January 11th, and the seventh and eighth-grade band presented their concert on Tuesday, January 18th. The concerts were presented live and streamed on Mr. O'Neill's YouTube channel. All of the students did a fabulous job with their performances on the CMS stage and are looking forward to performing in the new auditorium in the spring.
Keystone exams are complete, and the final exams for Semester 1 are currently underway at PWHS. Students are excited for their last day of finals tomorrow and the start of second semester on Monday. PW is also sending 29 students to DECA's statewide competition. Congratulations to all students who qualified for the state DECA competition in February. Finally, the PW Language Clubs hosted a friendly competition in the form of a can drive this holiday season, collecting nearly 500 cans of food, with the Latin Club taking the top spot with 246 cans. Special thanks to all who participated in collecting and counting the cans for Philibundance. This is the conclusion of our January 20th, 2021 student report. Thank you for all your time. Have a nice evening.
Thank you both very much. And so you're getting ready to finish your last semester at PW? Did you not hear me?
No, I think they did. They should be excited, I hope.
Okay, at this point, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Gail Plant as the district's representative on the Colonial School District Education Foundation Board. The Colonial School District Educational Foundation is an organization that supports the educational mission of the Colonial School District by providing financial assistance in the form of general support and grants for educational activities, programs, and initiatives. A Colonial School Board member represents the district on the foundation board. So I'm making a motion, and may I have a second? Chris, thank you. Are there any comments or questions? Gail is on Zoom. And may I have a vote to approve Gail as the representative? All in favor? Great, Gail, you're it. Tag, you're it. This is a motion to appoint Sharon Marino as the Colonial School District Representative on the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors. And may I have a second for that motion? Chris? Beth? Are there any comments or questions? All right, all in favor? Say aye. Thank you. Great, and lastly, this is a motion to reappoint Chris Epstein as one of the school district's representatives to the Central Montgomery County Technical High School Joint Operating Committee for a three-year term. The Joint Operating Committee consists of three members appointed from each of the sending and/or participating school districts. Those are Colonial, Narstown, and Upper Marion. And is there a second to Chris's motion nomination? Jamina, thank you. Okay, all in favor? Great, thank you very much. Jamina, new business, D.
Yes, we have a motion to approve the Educational Service Contract for the 2021-2022 school year as follows: George Clevers Memorial School, tuition for one student at $67,534.20 and one-to-one services for one student at $217.07 per day. Do we have a motion? Do we have a sec... I need a second.
Any questions? All in favor? Great, next.
And this is a motion to approve a settlement and release agreement. Due to student confidentiality, this agreement was reviewed in the executive session prior to the meeting.
Is there a second? Chris? All in favor? Great, thank you. Kathy?
Yes, this is a motion to approve the agreement with Epic Health Services to provide health-related services as outlined to Mrs. Burke's memo to Dr. Christian dated 1/10/22.
Is there a second? Beth? Any questions or comments? Dr. Christian, Mrs. Burke isn't here. Do you know what this Epic Health Services is for?
It is, it's for... Every district's looking for additional nurses. So this is for one particular student who needs nursing services. We are covering it now, but this will help us for that student during his extracurricular activities, plus possibly provide relief nursing services for the district.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All in favor? Great. William?
This is a motion to amend the bond purchase agreement for the 2022 bond issue to utilize the underwriting services of Raymond James &amp; Associates. Pursuant to Paragraph 10 of the bond purchase agreement dated February 18th, 2021, the Colonial School District directs RBC Capital Markets LLC to assign the bond purchase agreement in all their interests in the agreement, Raymond James &amp; Associates, Inc., effective January 21st, 2022. The district was informed in late December that they would... The entire underwriting team that serviced the school district for RBC Capital Markets had resigned and moved to Raymond James. The district wishes to maintain a relationship with the underwriting team and therefore is directing this change.
Is there a second to that motion? Sharon, any questions or comments on this?
So, I appreciate that. Did we get an estimate, or did we look at the services?
Mr. Zabaski's on the screen.
I see him over there. So did we just look at the cost of that or anything before we moved?
Should be no change to the current cost we were experiencing. It's just to keep the team that we're familiar with.
Okay, thank you.
That's correct.
Is that your question? Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor? Great, thank you. Chris, two policy items?
Motion to approve Board Policy 802, School Organization on a First Read Basis.
Is there a second? Kathy? Questions or comments on 802? All in favor? Great.
This is a motion to delete Board Policy 236.1 as the language is now found in Board Policy Number 212. This action was discussed at the January 10th, 2022 Curriculum Committee of the Board Meeting.
Is there a second to that deletion? Beth? Questions? All in favor? Thank you. Jamina?
Motion to approve Plymouth White Marsh High School Foreign Language Teacher, Dr. Richard Middell, to attend and present at the Northeast Conference on the Teaching of Foreign Languages in New York City from February 10th through 12th, 2022.
Is there a second? Sharon? Any questions? All in favor? Great, thank you. And Kathy, back to you.
This is a motion to approve instructors and classes for the Plymouth White Marsh High School Adult Evening School Winter and Spring 2022 Sessions as outlined in the attached memo from Jessica Lester dated January 14th, 2022.
Is there a second? Chris? Any questions? All in favor? Okay. This is a motion to approve revisions to the Colonial School District's 2021-2022 Health and Safety Plan as presented, and the superintendent has hereby granted discretion to implement modifications to the district's 2021-2022 Health and Safety Plan consistent with the intent of the board as expressed in this motion and consistent with the recommendations or directives of jurisdictional authorities. Specifically, Colonial School District will recommend masking while indoors for all students and staff when the district's COVID-19 transmission rates are low or moderate. I'm sorry, this is... We didn't... No. Change the unmask. Specifically, the district will recommend...
Recommend masking. Not require, recommend.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right, I thought we still had the type... Okay, I'm sorry. Recommend masking while indoors for all students and staff when the COVID-19 transmission rates are low or moderate for two consecutive weeks. The district will require masking if the transmission levels return to substantial or high transmission for one week. And that is a motion, and may I have a second? Comments, questions?
As we have discussed before, this can be reviewed and revisited at any time, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, I just looked up our numbers. Our current numbers for our school district specifically, so including Plymouth, Conchi, and White Marsh, is 1,105 per 100. Our percent positivity rate is over 28%. So if we were looking at the thresholds for low, moderate, substantial, and high to become mask optional or mask recommended, we have to be under 50 cases, and we're at 1,100. And we have to be at under 7% positivity rate, and we are at 28. My concern, because that Omnicron is so much more contagious, though less deadly, that we're never going to get there. So I mentioned this to Dr. Christian, and his answer, of course, is that we can always reassess. But I am not sure that that's the most feasible thing to do, knowing that we don't have these meetings as often... You know, as often we're talking about this stuff.
Okay.
So I am in favor of keeping masks right now because of this very high... The high transmiss... 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 Oh, my God, I can't...
Transmission.
Transmission rate. I'm particularly worried about our staff. I know teachers, as one of our commenters said, they are burnt out and they are losing their minds. So to be able to take away some of the risk to the teachers by keeping the students masked as well, I think, is the right thing to do. However, I don't think there is any light at the end of the tunnel if we are saying that we're going to wait for moderate to get here. So I don't know if I would want to change it to if we get to substantial. I don't know if that would pass with the board. But I would like to at least maybe have that conversation or maybe postpone this vote until next month when we see if our numbers currently go down more and sort of leave things as they are. So I would love to get some other board members' insights because I am, as we all are exhausted by the conversation and just want to be done with it. But anybody, thoughts?
Well, I think, Kathy, in terms of meetings, if we need to have a meeting, we can call a meeting anytime. So the fact that we have certain ones on the calendar doesn't mean we can't have others. And I'm sure we'd all love to have more, but we can always have another meeting. So I wouldn't let that be an obstacle.
So I'm sorry, I chose a bad moment to run to the ladies' room. So where are we now, Dr. Christian, as far as the different levels of transmission?
We are...
We're high, right?
We're in high.
What's our current ratio?
The incident rate is 1,100 cases per 100,000, and the positivity rate, the aggregate for the district, is 28.5%.
I know.
100,000.
And it needs to be, for us to become mask recommended, it has to be under 50. Substantial is under 100.
We're in high-high transition.
High, oh, high-high.
Substantial is 50 to 100, and moderate is under 50, so...
But substantial would be 50 to 99 across the district.
Yes.
Correct.
And the current recommendation is to be mask optional at moderate?
Moderate or low.
I also think I'd like to have a conversation about the substantial. I'll put it up to next month to see what happens with... You know, like, I keep reading... I mean, everything everybody said today... We're not cuckoo, right? I mean, we're trying to keep kids in school. We're trying to keep everyone safe. There's a lot to consider. And I just, you know, the news reports are showing that some, you know, some states are starting to decline. I wonder if we should put it off for a month and just keep everything status quo and have a conversation. I mean, your recommendation is this through March, right?
The board can vote on this every month if they want. This would just be moving forward. If the board doesn't vote tonight and puts it on hold, the mask... If the board doesn't vote tonight and puts it on hold, the masking requirement remains in place until a new motion is proposed.
So, why would we vote on it tonight and not give it another and just go month to month to see? I mean, I understand parents need to know and kids want to know, but given that several states are starting to see a major decline, right? Should we consider waiting or no?
It's up to the board.
I'm just throwing it. I literally just started to think about that.
The way I read this, though, is that if we do start the decline, then that gives, right, Dr. Christian, the authority to immediately make a change once we hit the parameters.
But we're talking about moderate. We're never going to get to under 50 cases.
Well, we have been in moderate before.
Correct.
We have been.
Across the district?
Yes.
Yes, but we've never been at 1,100 before.
Voting on it tonight or tabling it tonight does not change probably what the next month to two months looks like.
Right.
Omicron is different than Delta.
Right.
But, you know, there are reports out there that there could be a steep decline, and we did see a decline last spring. But this is a new phase of the COVID situation we're in. So, you know, the board can approve it or not approve it tonight and then still revisit it next month regardless.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Well, put it, if I may, put another way, it really won't make a difference likely between now and next month if the board approves the recommendation as you have it because next month you can revisit the recommendation if you want to under the circumstances. So, for all intents and purposes, the likelihood of us going from, as Dr. Christian mentioned, high-high to moderate is not likely within the course of the next month, even if there is a precipitous decline in Omicron, you know, spread in our community, and you could revisit it at that point.
If I understand correctly, currently, we don't have parameters in place with which to take away the masking requirement, correct?
Correct.
So, previous to January, we had said we would visit this in January to see. So, now the change is really to go from we have no idea when we're going to change this to here's a set of parameters that we can use or choose not to use tonight.
The board gave the superintendent's office the authority to modify the Health and Safety Plan on August 9th, but I informed the board that this is too important a decision not to bring in front of the public and to have a conversation with all 10 of us. And so, in December, we said we would come back and talk about it.
Yeah, no, I agree with you on that. And I, yeah, I just think we should come back and revisit it again next month and see what...
I think our brilliant solicitor made a perfect point. That we should vote on it tonight as we expected and planned, but then just maybe promise me to keep myself sane that we will actually have it on the agenda again at the next meeting just to make sure.
And I think that going forward, we're going to have this on the agenda just about every month.
That's a really great idea. Right, so, and it's just to keep it as it is. You know, I love it.
Put it as a standing agenda.
Right, so, some good conversations. Sharon?
Yeah, I just have, I have two wonderings. One is, do we have any sense of clinics that are currently taking place or within our community? Like, what is the rate of families going and still getting vaccinated? So, you know, before the big decisions are made, you know, we really want to be explicit and clear that it will happen, make sure everyone has appropriate time and resources to be able to do that. And I don't know if that needs an answer, but just a wondering. And then the other point is, several folks commented about surveys, and, you know, I am a big proponent in surveys, and I do want to know how our families feel about this, you know, whether or not it truly impacts the end game, I don't know. But I think it's important to listen to our families and see, you know, where are they right now with this process? So, I just wanted to put that out there and see if anyone had any thoughts about that.
I mean, I have thoughts on that. I don't know if it's something I want to get into tonight, but, I mean, a survey, we've done surveys in the past, and I think they have lots of benefit in certain circumstances. This is such a polarizing issue that as soon as we survey someone and they say, well, I want this, and somebody else says, I want this, we can't do both. So, again, we are directed as board members to make decisions, and will a survey change your mind about what you think should be done? So, that's the way I look at a survey. That's just my personal opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I think just even the idea of asking about if we move to recommended, would you still? And I think it's that perception that some, that families get also could also lend itself to making a more informed decision.
I think these are...
Not, are you pro or are you anti?
Right, right.
I agree with that. That's completely polarizing, but if we move to recommended, you know, where would you stand?
Right. I mean, I think there's lots of conversation that we're going to be having over the next couple of months as this continues to evolve. I know in other states, it's starting to really take a nosedive, New Jersey, New York, and hopefully, we're right behind. But we're going to have to look at this constantly.
And I'm sorry, and the thing about the survey is, I wouldn't recommend doing that until we're actually willing to make a decision that incorporates the survey because when we've done that before, and, you know, again, I mean, you could just see the emails we got this week, right? There's everybody on different sides of the equation. So, to just ask for asking just to see where everybody is is one thing, but I think it sets up expectations that unless the board is willing to take that information in and make a decision based on that, it sets everybody up for a false expectation, just because we've done it before and it doesn't... You have to be prepared to act on that, other than just to take it for false.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Jamina?
Yeah, I had a question about the, I guess, the hub that we make this decision based on. So, with a district that encompasses three municipalities, do they take an average across the three, or how is that decision made when Whitemarsh might actually be in moderate, whereas Conshohocken looks like it's currently or in a different area?
So, they provide it for each of our municipalities, and then they provide a district aggregate. So, Conshohocken, as I looked it up, was at 1,200 for the incident rate. Plymouth was at 1,050. Whitemarsh was at 1,106. The district aggregate was 1,105. They do the same. They do it over a seven-day rate and a 14-day rate.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, there is a motion on the floor, and I now forget, was, there was a second. Any other questions or comments from the board? All in favor of Dr. Christian's recommended revisions, please raise your hand. Okay, thank you very much. Chris?
Motion to approve advertising and bidding process for the Conshohocken Elementary School Upper Roof Replacement and Rooftop HVAC Units. Both projects are identified for replacement this year in the district's five-year capital plan.
So, I guess I have a... Okay, is there a second? Beth, any questions or comments? Dr. Christian, is this part of the five-year plan that we already approved, or is this a separate item?
This is part of it, but we moved it up due to the need at Conshohocken, and we discussed it at the FMT.
Okay, so, we have to approve each item in the five-year plan? Will you bring each item to the board?
It depends on the cost of the item.
Little ones not?
Yeah, little ones, we'll just get, we've already moved on some of those because the five-year plan was discussed.
Okay.
But this was a, we moved it up, and it was a fairly, it was a larger project, and we need to get moving on it right away to get it done this summer.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions? All in favor? Great, thank you. Committee reports. Kathy, Community Relations, Student Life, Safety and Wellness.
Yes, really just reviewing the minutes from our last meeting, which was held on January 10th. Karen Burke led us in a discussion about the Health and Safety Plan. So, we did discuss this a little bit prior to tonight, where Dr. Christian made his recommendations as we discussed. Different board members had different questions, which were all brilliant, of course, which led us to our decisions. And then Mrs. Burke talked to us about the Montgomery County Office of Public Health School Exclusion Guidelines. She did a wonderful job of explaining the beautiful color-coded graphs to us to help us understand the 10 versus five-day quarantine and isolation terms. That was extremely useful. And then Jessica Lester presented to us about the Adult Evening School for the Winter-Spring Session and about how we have wonderful community members suggesting different classes and volunteering or offering to host those classes. We will be having our next meeting, I don't really know when, next month, next month.
Next month.
Check the calendar. Thanks.
We held our meeting on January 10th. Ms. Gregitis and the curriculum supervisors gave us some highlights of some wonderful summer learning opportunities that we're going to be offering to our students this month, the summer, excuse me. Mr. Pachetti and Mr. James provided updates on our summer reading list and how they review texts to be added to that list. Mr. James gave us updates on, from the DEI Committee regarding the Mid-Atlantic Equity Consortium. They're having an audit, and also shared about upcoming events that were planned for Martin Luther King Day of Service. Our next DEI meeting will be held on January 25th at 6:00 p.m. in the PW High School Cafeteria. Mr. Bogley gave us updates on district technology distribution as well as infrastructure installations at the middle school. And we reviewed the conference request, which we approved earlier for Dr. Middell, the foreign language teacher at the high school, who will be going to the Conference of Teaching of Foreign Languages. And lastly, we reviewed the Policy 802, which we moved forward for first read, as well as we reviewed the policy that we marked for deletion.
Okay, thank you. Chris?
Sure. We did not have an FMT meeting this month, but Dr. Christian and Mr. Lally will be meeting with Dewey Engineering, who's our project manager for the new middle school. They're going to be meeting next week because we are getting closer to transitioning to the new building, and we'll have an update at our next FMT meeting, which will be held on February 7th. The exterior fence around the football stadium has not been replaced, so there's no more gaps and holes and all that, so it looks really nice. And then, just thanks to the turf and custodial crews, who we know Dr. Christian had a decision to make today regarding, you know, using his crystal ball and driving around at 4:00 a.m. this morning to determine whether we would have a virtual day or be in person. But even though it sort of was a non-event for us, the crew, the turf crew's out at 4:30 in the morning on a day when there's a potential event, prepping everything, and the custodians begin salting and shoveling at 5:00 a.m. So, they're up early regardless for that. So, and tomorrow, even though we didn't have significant precipitation, the roads are wet, the sidewalks are wet, and they're going to be refreezing. So, tomorrow, they'll be up at the crack of dawn again evaluating the slippery spots on the campuses and making sure that our schools can open safely. So, we have a great crew, and they do a great job, and I just want to say thank you for that.
Okay, Will, finance?
I do not have an update. We didn't have a meeting this month.
Okay, thank you. Beth, human resources?
No update either.
Chris?
Yes, the Central Monco Technical High School is really, truly a gem in our community. So, they received a $200,000 grant from the Regina Charitable Fund of the Philadelphia Foundation. So, Regina had, up until recently, had a nursing facility right near the tech school, and for about 25 years, they've had a really good relationship between the tech school and Regina and allowing their students to give them experience with working with the elderly. And sadly, they are no longer there at that location, but they have a fund, and they gave $200,000 to the tech school, and they're going to use that to offer scholarships and training opportunities for the kids to progress with all of their different programs that deal with care for the elderly. So, it's a really great, great scholarship, and that's a huge amount of money, so, yeah.
Okay, Sharon, intermediate unit, you just got appointed, so I'm not going to expect a report.
Not yet.
But next month, legislative, does anyone have anything they want to add or speak on legislatively? All right, does anyone have anything they want to say in terms of municipal or community liaisons? All right, and Gail, I guess same goes for you. You're not ready to speak on the foundation yet, but we'll catch you later.
Correct, thank you.
Thank you. Now is the time for any public comments of a general nature.
I did have, I had to go retrieve it from my office. Mr. Bink's email to public comments, I do want to read it in whole. To whom it may concern, I wanted to start off by mentioning my wife and I are new parents to the Colonial School system. Our son started earlier this year, in large part due to Whitemarsh Elementary's excellent reputation, but another significant reason was because of Colonial's COVID policies. The health and safety policies in place at Colonial are practical and have done a good job keeping our students and staff feeling safe during this crazy time while also maintaining points of normalcy for our children. Lunch in the lunchroom with friends, not at their desk, outside time, movement within the classrooms, the centers, et cetera. This is far and beyond what other local primary schools are doing right now, where children spend the vast majority of their day behind the same desk, in the same seat, and in the same classroom, lunch included. As things evolved with the pandemic, I would like to bring forward the discussion of making masks optional for students and staff while inside the Colonial Schools and facilities, encouraged and following suit of nearby school districts who are doing this successfully, namely Central Bucks. As most know, the Pennsylvania Supreme Court struck down the Acting Secretary of Health School Masking Order effective December 10th, 2021. The mandate was then lifted by Tom Wolf on January 17th, which ended the state's mask requirement in K-12 schools and allows the masking decision to be made locally. I would like to add this as an agenda item for the next school board meeting. As a parent of K-3 school-age children, I'd like to discuss how we live, can live with this as an endemic and start to help our children get back to normalized school days where they can see their friends and teachers' faces, learn from their emotions and articulations, and have the option to wear a mask or not. Thank you for taking the time to read this. Best, Lee and Bridget Bink. So, the board has already discussed mentioning this, having this as an item each month.
Yes, sure.
Lori LaFerty, again, I just wanted to piggyback on a few of the comments that people made about we need to worry about the teachers and the teacher's safety and the teacher's happiness. And I love my kids' teachers, but I don't think we, the students, we don't need to worry about the teacher's happiness and safety. They're adults. They have a union they can go to if they have a real concern. The students can't stand up and speak for themselves, especially the youngest. So, that's what we need to do. We can't burden the students any longer with keeping their teachers safe. It's just not fair to them. And then also, just to piggyback off of Kathy, I think you said, how long can we wait? It'll be forever if we get, if we try to wait below. And sure, we can all come back month after month, year after year, but for the students, like, this is it. For the seniors, they're done after this year. So, do we want to make them wait till June to take off their mask, see each other's faces? My daughter's, my youngest is in second grade, hasn't had a normal year of school, you know, so how, after next year, now she's going to the four-five school, and she's had no elementary, like, real elementary experience. So, yeah, we can revisit every month, but their time is flying by. So, they're missing out on all these, this school time that they're not getting back. So, again, I just want you to consider that, that they don't have a ton of time in school, and we would like to see them enjoy it while they're there. Thank you.
Okay, board comments?
Yeah.
Oh, there's another? I'm sorry. Sorry. Go ahead.
Please state your full name and place of residence.
Hello, this is Jamie Kaplan. I live in Whitemarsh Township. I just wanted to say that I'm troubled by the fact that you all just passed a resolution that if I were to summarize it to my child, it would be that the board voted that masks will be still recommended, is the word that you're using, not optional, when a rate of transmission is achieved that you've all just admitted will never happen. And that would be that rates of transmission would have to decrease 95% from where they are now for children to choose whether or not to wear a mask. So, it's never going to happen. So, I now have to tell my child they will wear a mask forever, and that even if by some miracle... miracle, transmission was reduced by 95%, it would still be recommended. You're recommending that they mask forever. It's very upsetting and sad and I don't, I don't understand how we can't just have a plan. It's not fair. Thank you.
Any more, Drew?
No, there's not.
Okay, board comments?
Okay, yeah, I have something to say, but then before I do that, I just want to, to Mrs. Lafferty, who just got up here and talked about her child, and we're all parents and we're all experiencing this. And from a personal perspective, I had two seniors who completely lost their senior year and I have a daughter who's a sophomore in college who hasn't had a normal year yet. So there's not a person here, administration, Dr. Christian has an eighth grader, you know, grandchildren. We all are parents and we do not take this lightly at all and we understand all that. As far as the concern, I just feel like I have to address this. As far as the concern for teachers, we're responsible as board members, not just for the children. We are responsible for our staff and we are responsible for our teachers and we are responsible for the custodians who get up at 4:00 a.m. and everybody else who works to keep this district moving and making it what is an amazing district and the reason that there's housing going out the zoo because everybody wants to move in here. So we have a lot of responsibility and kids are primary and really, one of the reasons that we continue to ask to look at the masks is because we want to keep the kids in school. And so we had talked about doing a presentation to show the impact of what happens when you wear a mask and not, and, you know, maybe we can do that another month, but that doesn't go unnoticed and that is our primary goal. But we are responsible for the entire district and everybody in it. That being said, I am announcing that I'm going to be resigning from the board effective February 18th, after the next board meeting. When I, in 2017, I decided not to run again because I knew I was going to go back to work full-time. And when I ran originally in 2009, one of the things that I campaigned hard on was that there were board members who weren't attending meetings and weren't able to be what I thought was not giving the time to the district that they needed. I don't want to be that board member that I campaigned against. And that's why I left when I knew I was going to be going back to work full-time. So I left the board, I ran again, and it's ironic to me that tonight we voted, we passed the principles of governance and leadership because the reason that I agreed to run again with the other four fabulous women that are sitting here with me is because I strongly felt that that was not being followed and that those, that governance was going out the door. And so I ran to bring all that back to the district and it's here. We have four new, great board members who I've only worked for, for a short time, but when we, when one of the board members decided not to come on, we interviewed, what, 17 candidates? And while I didn't think anybody would want to be on the board, there were actually several really great, qualified folks who can dedicate the time and can serve. And that's what I want for this board. I have a job that requires a great deal of travel. I don't want to be the board member that's not here and can't give what I think this district deserves. And so after I saw that turnout, I spoke to Mrs. Moore and said, I think, I think now's the time, you know, the district's in great hands and you have really great committed board members. So I thank you for my time here. I'll be at next month's meeting. But that's, that's my announcement. So thank you.
Thank you. I do have one comment that I'd like to make, and that is just with respect to public comment that was made that referred, that inferred that we feel as a board that people who share other opinions are cuckoo or that we don't care or that we dismiss, we're dismissive of that, of those opinions and those comments. And I just want to say personally, that is absolutely not true. And we read every email, we look at those articles, we listen to every comment, we, you know, it's a difficult position that we're in, but we do care. We care about our community, we care about our teachers, we care about our students. And that's really all I want to say.
And I would just like to say, because I can't let it go, but say that Beth, I greatly appreciate why you're going to resign. I know how much this means to you and how much you want to do it properly and we're going to miss you greatly. But I too was stunned by the number of applicants we had for our last opening and I really thought that during COVID times, who would volunteer to do this? And I was shocked at how many really strong people came out and we chose Gail. Sharon, I'm sorry. Yeah, Sharon, yes, Sharon. And we have three other brand-new board members who ran in COVID, during COVID, and Sharon has volunteered to do this. And I think we can get, we can find another one. So I appreciate why you're leaving, but I don't appreciate that you're leaving, so we will miss you. But thank you for your very nice statement. Does anyone else have anything to say? If not, this meeting is adjourned.